Now, our July 19th, 2022 Borough Council Work Session Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Flynn. Before we get on to item three, just a couple of housekeeping items. One, we have Mr. Gore here, who is our Director of Building Housing, and he's going to sit in for Mr. Metric, who is away. So, thank you, Mr. Gore, in case you were wondering. Also, last week, there were some comments and questions about our process for choosing new legal counsel. We had an RFP put out there. I'm just going to clarify for the record that council will meet an executive session in August to decide that, and then we'll make it official at our work session or voting session meeting. Okay? Okay, moving on to item three, which is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. Are there any? Okay, we will move on. Thank you. Item four, which is under our Finance Revenue Committee, which has approved entering into a professional services agreement with the Courtney Investment Consulting Group, P O R B C Wealth Management, to provide investment management services to the Borough of Westchester non-uniform and police pension plans. This comes recommended by the Committee 3O. Mr. Allen, any comments on this?
Yeah, this is a continuation of years of work, really, beginning with the Financial Advisory Committee that was formed, and one of the conclusions was to create a pension board for both our pension plans that consists of members of the Borough and members of the unions that work alongside them. So this is one of the first recommendations we're getting from that new pension board, and Mr. Wilkens is here and is happy to share some of the details about this decision.
Great, thank you. It's been a lot, it's been fun, a couple of years, though. So, yeah, thanks. This is the first time we're, as a board, presenting before the council with a piece of, with a recommendation. So appreciate everyone giving us the opportunity to do that. By way of background, as Mr. Allen said, the board, we were appointed, I think, the end of last year. I'm one of the appointed members of that board. I've been working in pensions for 20 years. There are two other appointed members to the board, both experienced capital markets folks, who volunteered their time and expertise to the pensions and the board. The committee also includes Mr. Metric and then members of the uniform and non-uniform pension plans, so all people who want to serve, and there's a very good alignment of interest from everybody on the board with respect to finding or generating the best possible performance that we can for the pension assets in the most cost-effective way, and I think we're pleased to present this first kind of recommendation for you. We're making a recommendation to hire a pension consultant that would work with the committee, and then the committee would then, in turn, report up to council. From April of this year through July, we ran a fairly standard process to identify that pension consultant. It included issuing an RFP in mid to late April. That was advertised on the Westchester Borough website. We also published a story in Pensions and Investments, which was, or is, a leading publication for the industry. It's nationally read, it's widely considered the most-read publication for the industry. So we wanted that, we wanted this to be as well-known as possible. There were responses from four groups that came back as bidders for the business. The committee reviewed the responses, the four responses that we received. We did that over a three- to four-week period. We met as a committee, we deliberated, we elected to move forward with two of the four respondents through an interview process. Coincidentally, in addition to the two groups being very well-thought-of, highly-respected groups in the industry, they were both the most cost-effective opportunities for us to select a provider. And so there was a unanimous decision among the group to go with, after the interviews, to go with the Courtney, the Courtney Group, Courtney Investment Consulting Group, which is part of RBC, Royal Bank of Canada. Key takeaways, so you're aware of kind of how we thought about this. It's a local group, they're based in Conshohocken, so they have experience and with other local municipalities and so forth, being very hands-on, being on-call for meetings and issues as necessary. They have a very client-friendly fee structure. It's a flat fixed fee that they guarantee over a five-year period that's very favorable in the industry, so our pension assets go up, which we all hope they will. The fee will be struck, and we aren't paying more based on, by the increase of the assets. Individualized approach, we talked about that a lot with the Finance Committee and you all when we were putting the board together. We can find a service provider who can give us a kind of a customized, individualized approach to the risk and rewards that we seek as a pension plan, as pension plans. They work with pension plans that are the same size and same geography here as the Westchester Borough plans, good experience serving municipal plans with the same needs that we have here in Westchester, which is wonderful. You know, over the past 20 years, experienced managing local and county plans. Current press clients include Delaware County, Chester County, Makefield, Pottstown, so all folks that we know. They have experience working with Taft-Hartley Plans, which is governed by the ERISA, by ERISA statutes, it's a federally-defined and regulated standard of care for asset managers, it's the gold standard, so they know what it means to manage assets in an appropriate way. Backing of a larger financial institution with Royal Bank of Canada, which is wonderful. And then, you know, the last two points, very important, most cost-effective provider that we interviewed. Over the next 12 months, we will pay one-third of the cost that we paid over the last 12 months. So we're getting a 66% discount to what we're currently paying for the same services. Five-year contract, if we look at that on one-year basis, in excess of $140,000 worth of savings, the pension plan won't pay that in cost to, in order for us to administer the pension investment process. Over five years, we would be saving over $700,000, that's just not going to go out as an expense, which is wonderful, which is what we talked about for the last couple of years, which is great. And then the last point I would say is, just subjectively, the board felt very comfortable with the Courtney Group. In the interview process, there was just a feeling that they would be easy to work with, local, address the needs of the Borough and the board and the plan participants. So it was, as I said before, it was unanimous recommendation of the board that the Borough hire the Courtney Group as the pension consultant for the Westchester Borough, uniform and non-uniform plans. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know there's some new faces since the last time we were here.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and thanks for all your hard work. I know the board, you guys have been, since you guys have reformed, it's been really helpful, and I think this is one of the big, the big asks that we had of you, and it's really exciting to see that you have somebody that you're disenthusiastic about. You mentioned that this firm, they also manage Conshohocken, you said?
They have Delaware County.
Delaware County, okay.
Yeah, so they've had county plans, they've had local other municipalities, they have, yeah, they have in excess of 20 some-odd different clients, which is, allows them to be, us to be, you know, hands-on, very customer-focused.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things that the pension board was very, really pleased with, really happy about.
Great. Questions or comments from up here?
I just have one question. So I, you mentioned one-third the cost of what we're paying now.
That's right.
Say that figure again, over five years, what we'll pay.
So it's $140,000 a year.
A year.
Over five years, that's in excess of $700,000.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So, I appreciate the $140,000 savings, for sure, but on the return side, do they offer what their experience has been?
Yep.
For those other clients?
Yeah, so they've been doing this for 20 years for a variety of different clients, and one of the things that we were really excited about this group, the two groups that we interviewed, with this group in particular, is that they're going to customize the portfolio to what our risk tolerance is and target a return that we need in order to generate the necessary dollars to pay our beneficiaries and avoid needing to, you know, bring down the MMO as much as we can in any particular year. So the return, they couldn't necessarily provide us a guarantee or offer us a particular return, because that's going to get set when we hire anyone, whether it's Courtney or somebody else. We would develop what's called an IP, an investment policy statement. How much fixed income, how much equities do we want? And that sets sort of the risk and return thresholds that we would seek, and so that's sort of the next step in the process, but I guess, Patrick, the best way to answer that is, they've been doing this for 20 years for a lot of local plans, and so they have had good success in doing it and retaining those clients. So that's what I'd say.
Did you speak with any of their clients?
I have, yeah. So I know some of the clients, have spoken with some of the clients, and they've been happy with the, with the performance that they have. So I've done that personally, yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And so what has been the performance with some of the clients? Because I'm looking at these figures of 8.92 and above returns, and I think that's amazing. I mean, that's pretty good.
Yeah, no, and, Samara, it'll depend based on the, what the clients, how they have sort of, how much they would want in any particular asset class, but yeah, they've had, I don't have those figures for any particular group in front of me, but it's been, it's been a very strong market for everyone. I think that they've had good success with their, with the clients that they have. I don't have the numbers that their clients have in particular, but it's also always all published, just like our returns are published, all of their clients publish their returns.
Any other comments or questions up here? Okay, anybody in the public have comments or questions on this item? Okay, are we consent?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Wilkens, thank you very much for your help and for your effort.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so to unfold on the consent agenda, item five is schedule a public hearing on August 16th, 2022, to consider amending the code of the Borough of Westchester, Chapter 89, titled Sewers, Section 89-1 dot 1G, to revise sewer tapping fees in accordance with the May 6, 2022, updated study by Keystone Alliance Consulting, Inc. Mr. Allen, want to just give us a brief overview of that?
Sure, so this is one of my favorite Finance Committee recommendations, is to get creative about revenue. This is one of those, one of those things. In 2003, some legislation changed about the kind of fees that you could charge. In 2003, council moved to max out those fees, and that's that 2693 number, and we have not gone back to look at that since. So we're doing that now, and based on that legislation, we can go up to 5115. What I find attractive about this proposal is that it really targets developers. It's developers paying their way into our system that we maintain here, so it's not going to hit residents directly, definitely just going to hit developers. So I think it's one of those creative solutions to help us out here.
And something long overdue, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Questions or comments from up here? Okay, public, anybody in the public, questions or comments? Okay, all right. Are we consent on this? All right, so we'll move item five to the consent agenda. Moving on to item six, under our Public Works Committee, we have extend McGovern's contract at original bid price of seven cents per gallon through December 31st, 2023, for hauling sludge. Mr. McCoy, anything special about this? It's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward, I think, given the environment of fuel cost increases, et cetera, I think we're, this is a great deal for us, so I recommend we go for it.
Okay, it was 3-0 from the committee. Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, are we consent? Okay, we'll move items six to the consent agenda. Moving on to item seven, under our Parking Committee, we have approve parking agreement amendment number six with the County of Chester for 60 parking spaces in the Chestnut Street Garage at $90 a month, space according to the terms and conditions of the daytime permits for the garage, September 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2023. I feel like this is, is this the same price agreement? Who's parking? Ms. Ficaro, right? Yeah?
This, this is just a continuation, yes.
Okay, that being said, any, we have any problem with this on consent agenda? Any questions or comments from out there? No. Okay, we'll put item seven on consent. Item eight, approve one-year extension of parking management agreement with Imperial Parking LLC with a 3% management fee increase. This was 3-0 from the committee as well. Anything to add to that, Ms. Ficaro, or? Pretty straightforward.
This is pretty much necessary.
Yep. Okay, are we consent? Okay. Yep, we'll move item eight to the consent agenda. Item nine is approve a one-year fire system inspection and maintenance contract for the Chestnut Street Garage with Johnson Controls, beginning July 21st, 2022, in the amount of $2,675. System inspection and maintenance contract. Okay, Ms. Ficaro, anything else to add to that?
No.
Yeah. Okay, consent on that? All right, moving right along. Item nine is on the consent agenda. Under Public Safety, item 10 is approve the extension of the Gay Street closure to the weekend of September 9th, 11th. Is that just the following week after Labor Day, or is that one extra week or two? Yep. Oh, it was before.
Oh, correct, sorry.
But it's a week after Labor Day, correct?
Yeah.
At least a week after. Okay. Yeah, any, any issues with that? Okay, move that to consent. That's item 10. Under Smart Growth, item 11, approve the PAC endorsement for the mural project at Safe Harbor, Chester County, at 20 North Matlack Street. The committee did recommend 3-0 with the condition that Westchester Police Department perform a safety study. Mr. McGuinness, any, what was the reasoning with the safety study for that?
This particular project is located in an alley, and so what we were worried about was through traffic and visibility, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Gore.
Thank you. Yeah, there was a concern about individuals standing in the alley there, taking photographs, and vehicles not being able to see them, or traveling at a high rate of speed through the alley. I did send this to the police department, and I have not heard back yet. So if you still want to follow the committee's recommendation...
So if we, the recommendation made to wait to approve it, or to approve it with the stipulation that we have the study done and approved from the police?
Yeah, I believe the recommendation was to approve it with the condition that the police department provides that information.
Yeah, so if we, if we approve this with that stipulation, and the police department came back and said, "This isn't really dangerous, we shouldn't do this, we could, we could", okay. Is that okay with everybody up here? No, it's, it'll be in the, it'll be officially in the, it's official, we're saying it now, so.
Yeah, that, that condition will go on to the endorsement for the project, so we can let the PAC members know that that's the condition of it, we'll let the owners of Safe Harbor, whoever's conducting the project install, we'll let them know that if the police department does not approve this, then the project will have to be reevaluated.
My question was, could we instead say, like, do the condition with the police, but then if the police say that the selfie aspect is too dangerous, just strike the selfie part and keep the green light on, just without that? Is that, is that possible?
What do you, what do you mean by the selfie part?
So there would still be a mural with all those requirements, but you just wouldn't take a selfie with it?
I believe what Mr. Gore stated is the way we should move forward with it, contingent upon that plan approved by the police. If there's an issue, then it's going to have to go back to the drawing board.
Sorry, I hadn't seen it yet. Okay, that makes more sense. Is that the whole thing, or is that just a part of it that, that's the whole thing? I think we keep in that stipulation, just in case. Okay? Is that all right? Can we consent on that?
Yes.
All right. All right, thanks. So we'll consent to that with that stipulation put in there for item 11. Item 12 is approve the June 2022 Harb certificates of appropriateness. I'm happy to go through each one, unless, what I'd like to do usually is if there's nothing outstanding, or if anybody has any issues, or if the committee had any big issues, we can kind of just overview and say, "Let's just accept them all," but I'm happy to go through each one, or get individuals or...
These were, these were just standard signs, projects.
Okay. Yeah, so if that's okay, we can approve them all on the consent agenda in one pop, instead of going through each one. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. All right, so if there's no issues, then we'll put number, item 12, 1, 2, 3, and 4 on the consent agenda. Okay, item 13, approve the Union Station land development and settlement agreement with Union Station Condominiums LLC. Any issues with this land development settlement, anything? It was 3-0 from the committee, so I'm assuming...
No, there were no issues.
All right, we consent on that? We're moving here, we're moving. Item 14, approve a resolution enabling the Railroad Restoration Committee to provide rail service via the metro concept between Westchester and Wawa, Delaware County. The committee recommended this 3-0. I know this is a resolution that had a couple things changed on it, which I thought were for the better, and what the gist of this resolution is that it's just going to essentially give approval from the Borough, from council, for the pursuit of this plan. Anybody up here want to speak on it?
No, I mean, that is correct. Just want to give credit to Mr. Hickey and Joanne Kelton for putting together the time and effort with the Railroad Restoration Committee and all the volunteers for what they're doing, and hopefully that this long-term project will come to fruition one day, I believe it will, sooner rather than later, and so I believe that we should support this resolution.
Thank you.
Mr. Stefano, with all due respect, the Westchester Historic Railroad Association has never made a public statement about how they feel about the Metro Line, and they would like to do that this evening.
I welcome that, yeah. Beth, you want to come up?
I sound nervous, I've never been before, you guys before, but anyway.
Don't be nervous.
My name is Beth Ann Keats, I'm a volunteer with the Westchester Railroad, and I'm here on behalf of the Westchester Railroad, Four States, and the owners of the railroad, Joe Chikino, Skip Small, and the remaining members of the Westchester Railroad. I would like to express our concerns with the resolution for a battery-powered pop-up metro. We have operated and fully maintained the Westchester Railroad on SEPTA-owned tracks for over 25 years. We do not, I respectfully speak, feel that we can coexist with a passenger railroad. We barely have enough space for our own operations now. SEPTA managers have expressed to us that they are proud and supporting us in the fact that we are the only heritage railroad operating on their systems, and especially that we're all volunteers. The sole goal of the Heritage Association is to preserve, educate, and protect railroad memories, as well as the recruitment of our volunteers. We would like to know exactly how a 100% volunteer railroad, where most of us also have real jobs, is expected to coexist with a seven-day-a-week operating passenger metro. The infrastructure will not support both. We have saved and protected this historical line dating back to 1858. When we do our own track work, when we have the opportunity to teach how a tie is put in, a spike is hand-driven. Have you ever done that? I have. Or a locomotive that is over a half-century old is repaired. The Westchester Railroad was a vision of the Westchester forefathers, as railroads began back in 1831. That line ran from the center of Westchester to Fraser and Malvern area. Unfortunately, that line will never be able to run again, because it's now built over. The bridge is, I don't know, right there. Maybe, maybe some of you know. We brought, last year alone, we brought in over 13,000 passengers. These passengers come back year after year after year, for our Santa runs, for our Easter runs, for our Halloween trains, and all of the trains in between. They come for our picnic runs. Lorenzo's donated picnic tables, so we now have picnic tables at the Westchester Borough at our station. I've spent the past two years-plus planting beautiful gardens all along our platform. If you go look at it, it's all gorgeous yellow right now, the day lilies have finally taken their own. The engine that's sitting in the center of Westchester right now was built back in 1941. That was when the civil engineer, Army Civil Engineers were involved in making sure that that train actually was able to be used at the quarry ultimately. The quarry donated that train to us. It has a sister that's still at the quarry, we're hoping to get. Might be a little rusty, but its engine's apparently better than this one. Anyway, sorry. The, the locomotives that we have are all over a half-century old. These volunteers all do all of the work on the coaches, the trains, and everything in between. The Westchester Railroad, as I said, was 1831. Come out and join the celebration of our 25th anniversary on September 25th, 2022. I hope you all can join us. You've all been given, I believe, verbal as well as written invitations to come out and join us, and I hope the Westchester Borough will support us in that. More than anything, I'd like to welcome you all to come out and ride the train sometime. If you haven't ridden our train, come out and see the heritage that we are there. Yeah, occasionally, we have to pause because a tree falls on our tracks, like we did this past weekend. Saturday, Sunday, it took us an hour and a half to move a tree, it was probably like this size around, that had fallen across our line. But we do it, we make it happen. Our passengers are thrilled that we actually carry a chainsaw on the train and are able to do that, and our volunteers make it happen. Anyway, I hope that you all continue, come out and see the beautiful tree-lined railroad, and come back and ride with us again into the golden age of railroads that we're trying to recreate and keep recreated, that dates back to the Pennsylvania Railroad days. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy and delighted to answer them. We are preserving history. We hope that you have, we have your full support, and we thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I have a couple questions. So is anybody from the Westchester Railroad, the Historic Railroad, is any, anybody that volunteers with you sit on the Rail Restoration Committee board?
No.
Okay.
We've attended multiple of their meetings. We've requested to actually come when they have met with SEPTA, and we were not invited.
Okay. Okay, because as far as I knew, this was never a you or a passenger, like, I didn't know this was one or the other. Is that the way you see it, that if they come, you're gone? I never saw it that way.
It, it could be.
Okay, could be, okay. All right.
I just don't, we, there, there's a, there's a big concern on our part, on how it could potentially coexist.
Yeah.
We're volunteers.
Yeah.
Now, we, we are able to go out in the middle of the night if we hear a tree's fallen or something, and, or vandalism's happened, and go fix it.
Yeah.
We've, we've done a ton of work. The book that was written on the Westchester Railroad outlines and details and detail what we've actually done over the past 25 years.
Okay.
With no help from the Borough.
Yeah.
With no help from SEPTA, with no help except for the forefathers of our railroad, which is the Westchester Railroad, Four States.
Okay.
And all of the money that we get in ticket sales. I mean, that's our biggest revenue.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and I've, and like I said, I've told you earlier before the meeting, I have ridden several times with my kids, and it is amazing, so I do support that.
We're getting kids and grandkids and grandkids now, I mean, 25 years, it's a lot.
Can I get more questions or comments from up here, and then I want to ask some of the rail restoration people to comment on it.
So I think my question is along the same lines, Mr. Stefano, and, you know, I'm relatively new to council, however, the railroad restoration has been a very popular topic, and this is really the first time to Mr. Stefano's that I have heard that there are concerns with the historic, with the Westchester Railroad and the rest, the restoration of a rail line. That has not previously been brought forward, is it just the electric? Is it just the electric metro that presents the challenge? Or just coexistence in general is the challenge?
It's probably a little bit of both.
And I guess we'll need to hear from the Railroad Commission, but has there been an attempt to partner with that committee so that coexistence is going to be addressed?
We've been attending their meetings for more than a year plus now. And we've been working to make sure that the Rail Restoration Committee is fully aware, or hopefully fully aware, of what our position has been, that we've got a lot, a lot of concerns. There's been meetings between the groups. We've gone out and, you know, I personally went out and when they went and visited in December, the pop-up metro, I went out with them at that point, as well as another member of my organization, Larry Jensen. And we were given the opportunity to drive it. It's cool and neat and all, but I just don't see how potentially it would fit with what we're doing right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to understand what the ability to coexist. Is it physically the infrastructure? Or is it the mission of the two is so diverse? Maybe I need to see graphically, you know, what it is in terms of what is the conflict?
We're a single-line railroad that runs from, that originally ran from the center of Philadelphia, 30th Street Station, all the way into Westchester. If you've never ridden on our line, you will see that it's physically impossible to put two lines on the right-of-way. There's cliffs, there's rock cuts. At some points, we have either side of a swamp in certain areas through West Town, through some of the different areas. There physically is not enough room in our yard to accept more trains, to put more infrastructure on top of what we already have. We barely fit in the area that we are. And environmentally, we believe that it's important to maintain the integrity of what we have. We have no indoor storage.
Thank you. So I don't remember when the Railroad Commission was started, but the bigger project that was proposed, I don't know, was it 350 million or whatever the big project was, would that have had the same impact on your organization, I assume?
It would.
Okay, again, I've never heard of any conflict about it before, so that's why I'm asking the question. Thank you.
Yeah, quite honestly, I haven't heard the conflict either. This is the first I'm hearing it, so. Anybody else up here? Okay, I know there's, oh, sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say the same thing. I think maybe most of us thought that you were lockstep working together and that you could coexist. And I'm just wondering why your group, I mean, because you have a, you certainly have a wealth of information and passion about your project, as do they, their project. And I just wish that you and your group had been here, because they've been here multiple times, multiple, multiple, multiple times for two years. And/or a year, yeah, just about two years. And so I'm just wondering where your group has been. If you realize that you couldn't coexist, why you haven't been here? And I'm not putting you on the spot. I'm just, you know, because I see your desire to preserve it and the history you presented has been formidable.
I think part of that is because we have been given multiple assurances over the past several years that coexistence is possible. It is feasible. We've asked for certain pieces of information. We've asked to be involved in the meetings that have been with SEPTA when the leaseholder is SEPTA and the Westchester Railroad with the Borough of Westchester in the middle. And we've never been invited to those meetings. We want to make sure that, you know, with our, we're fully aware that the lease is coming up soon. Our lease is up for renewal. Later this year. We just put in 15 years. We would love, and a total of 20, and that was on the last lease. You know, it's, it kept getting more and more years each time.
Okay.
When we spend, and I believe if I'm not mistaken, Ms. DeBattiste, we actually sent a letter to you in January, February of this year, and we never received a response. We've sent letters to the Borough Council and minimal response from anybody.
Okay.
For various reasons.
Mr. Stefano, with the metro high-speed line, with the sidings that your equipment is sitting on right now, over there, I guess that's Adams Avenue, with everything on the sidings that we see sitting there.
Tracks that we've put in.
The electric train has to have a specific charging building to be charged so they can move forward.
Right.
I'm sure we'll hear from the Train Commission, you know, where they plan on putting the Quonset hut so they could charge it. But I'm sure they wouldn't want to put the Quonset hut on the line itself at Market Street. So where are they going to be able to fit on your space currently so that they can do the charging of the metro?
I believe Mr. Hickey has outlined that specifically, where they believe it's a safe place to put it, and that's right next to the creek.
Okay.
Between Market and, is that Bernard? I think it's Bernard.
Okay.
Or no, between Bernard and Union, actually.
Yeah, and I don't think we still know about the open spaces the mayor was talking about, about putting gardens. Remember when they put the apartment building in there? And that's where the people now currently park their cars when they go on the train. And they were going to put pavers in there with grass so they could pull in there. But the, if the, I'm seeing the words up there now because I wouldn't even know what the words are, but the car barn would actually cramp the entire spot right there at the Market Street and John O'Green Park. So it's a little confused. I understand it. It just doesn't look like it'll work, so. So.
It's a different site. It's on the other side.
Yeah, but that new parking area.
It's got the walkway to the bridge, the car barn. It's because it's on the other side of the bridge.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's the other side of Bernard Street.
Okay, I see now.
The area that we had to clear out homeless people and tons and tons of debris. And it's still littered with glass.
Yeah, so basically, as we could see from Ms. Keats's presentation this evening, she so elegantly has told us that the Historic Railroad, that it's a fabric of the borough, probably can't fit in the same spot as the metro electric train. Did I sum that up properly?
The infrastructure and the space is not there and available. I have one more question. We have access, as does SEPTA, and I know Mr. Hickey has looked at them as well, to the VOW maps from the Pennsylvania Railroad that actually date back to the 1918s that show where all the land spaces are, where, you know, what parts we do and do not own. We were able to share those VOW maps with Mr. Hickey so that he was able to use them to try and figure out if this would work.
Okay, Ms. Dorsey.
I have one more question. You mentioned that your lease is up for renewal, and that's the lease of the tracks themselves? Is that correct? As well as that parking space, right?
It's the whole line. It's from Westchester to Glen Mills.
So how does that impact? So if you have the lease, let's assume you have a lease, your lease is renewed for 15 years or whatever, how does that impact? Would they have to, how would they, how would that work? If you own the lease, the tracks are leased to you, the space is leased to you, and the railroad restoration wants to, you know, implement this metro, but the lease, you have the lease, how would that work?
SEPTA is the only one that can answer that question.
Thank you.
All right, can I have some of the rail restoration? Mr. Hickey, Ms. Kelton, come on. Just to kind of give your point of view on this.
First of all, I'd like to say we unequivocally support the tourist railroad. We have said it, there's a statement in this presentation, there's a statement in every single thing we write saying we support the railroad's continuation and coexistence. Just want to make that clear. Three of us on the committee are members of the Historic, of the Heritage Society. In addition, members of this, Beth and other members of the committee, who have the Historic Society come to our meetings. They are fully invited to share space around the table and to talk with us as equals as part of the committee, even though they're not formal members of the committee. Their input is valuable. I think that that relationship is best shown by our encouragement of last year. The Borough declared a, I think it was July, I can't remember which month it was. We declared one of the months as Railroad Appreciation Day and thanked the, had the volunteers thanked by the council directly so that they knew our appreciation of their volunteer efforts. Beyond the running of a railroad, it's kept that line from being a decrepit trash dump, drug hangout, and all sorts of other things that happen with other SEPTA properties that are out of service within this region. So they bring real value to the Borough, and again, we continue them. That all said, we have done what we can and continue to to promote coexistence. It is not a mystery. Railroad tracks serve freight trains, passenger trains. That's the nature of railroad tracks. What we are proposing is a five-day-a-week operation. Again, it's in this presentation we made previously to the council. We propose a five-day-a-week operation to stay out of the way of their passenger trains, which primarily happen on weekends. And we can find windows on a weekday when, if there's a need to run a tourist train on a weekday, but that's very rare in past practice. We have invited from Texas and specialists and experts who actually run passenger trains with common carrier train service in Grapevine, Texas, in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. From Tennessee, we've brought them, well, it's Zoom, so I can't say we brought them at considerable expense. We certainly brought them forward and had Zoom meetings, which the railroad attended, talking about how they made that work. And probably the most important thing that my friend Paul Ballard from Tennessee said, the way he made it work was he just started off with a commitment, it's going to work. And every time the engineers or designers came forward and said, it would be so much simpler if we just forget about that tourist railroad thing. We're going to make it work. We have that commitment, and that is what the commitment we have continued to make. And I would encourage the Borough, in fact, they want to add it to the resolution, feel free. We encourage that outward sign that we are committed to this. That, sure, go ahead.
Sorry, we got a copy of the lease from Paul Ballard for the, pardon, of their lease, and we gave it to SEPTA. So SEPTA knows, and has known all along. The inception of our committee was 2014. And we made it clear at the beginning of our talks that we wanted to coexist with Historic Railroad, and we gave them a copy of the lease that could make that happen, so. There's been no mystery here.
Let me just clarify the question of the lease. There is one lease. The lease is between SEPTA and the Borough of Westchester for the preservation of the railroad. We are author, no, excuse me, not we, but the Borough is authorized to sublet in that agreement in a non-exclusive basis. The word "non-exclusive" basis is there in the lease, is authorized to sublet to the railroad. And since '97, the Borough has sublet to the railroad, with, again, that phrase, it's a non-exclusive lease, subject to whatever SEPTA wants. So it's not the Borough's decision, it's not the railroad's decision, it's not our decision. It's a decision of SEPTA. If we can convince SEPTA that this is a worthwhile operation, the metro, this is why we need their understanding that the Borough supports us looking into this and investigating it further. This is not something we're capriciously making up on the spot.
Can I ask a question? If, say, you know, we approve this down the line, however many years, we get this to happen, right? Just pieced together, we get it. What, like, all the improvements and the plans that we have, the parking, would that not also benefit, considering you guys could coexist, just given that you can coexist on the line? Would it not also benefit, would that parking mean that you have nicer parking? Would all the lines, like, all the improvements, the station, would also mean that the Historic?
Not just nicer parking, but as, well, the diagram keeps changing. We're providing green parking, which is much more palatable to the neighborhood and as well. Sorry, there was something. Oh, we are not proposing passing sidings, we are not proposing double-track. That, that's all the $380 million plan. And no, if SEPTA took over that line and restored service as a SEPTA service, there would be no tourist train at all because they do not coexist under SEPTA's rules. That's why we're pursuing other approaches where we can coexist. Our parking area, as it were, the car barn, as Councilman Flynn appropriately called it, is between the parking lot, which is on the other side of Bernard Street, and their facility, which is on the south side. Would you go one back from here? Thank you. We're taking the old Neale Street Station, which was on the same side where it says former platform, which is where their yard and I just operate. We don't think that's an appropriate environment to mix customers with. It's primarily industrial. So we're moving to SEPTA property. And all of this is SEPTA property, by the way. And that is what is leased. It's not the tracks. What is leased is SEPTA's property. So there's more than just the track shows. Actually, I can double this. This was before I got the VOW maps to confirm the property lines. But this is 50 spaces on the other side of Neale Street from where we had it, from where the station was before, so that we don't mix those two uses and we don't run into people trying to park in railroad yard for commuters. Commuters are ornery beasts when they.
Sure.
Need to park. Step one more back, please. And again, this demonstrates a more orderly parking lot than it is. There's not as much parking as you can cram in, but it is conform with ordinances for parking. So by virtue of fixing it up, there's a grandfathering that we lose. But frankly, as the person who put it together, I think this is a pretty elegant use of the site. Again, using green spaces and filling in the rest with green as well so that it becomes a garden when people aren't there.
Okay, and I'd like just to remind council as well, this is not, what we're approving tonight is not this plan. We're approving a resolution for the Railroad Committee to pursue this plan.
Yeah.
Right, to pursue it. So there's nothing binding. There's nothing happening tonight, essentially. This is really just a kind of an idea and a support for this, so.
Mr. Stefano, if I may. So I guess I have a concern that there are two different versions or perceptions of what is or isn't going to happen. And maybe this resolution could be updated to include the Historic Railroad, to make sure that they are, that it spells out clearly that consideration for their existence is part of the overall plan. Because I don't hear the same thing coming from both parties. And I do see the value in the Historic Railroad. And I think that, you know, if we are going to have this committee, we need to make sure that we are considering what exists there today and is providing a service.
And if I may add, that's at our urging. SEPTA is not saying to us, if we encourage you to go forward with this, you need to have the Historic Railroad. That's us bringing it to SEPTA as something we want to do.
Okay. So given what you just said, Ms. Dorsey, I would be, I'd be supportive if we could add to this, this extra part to this resolution with those exact, I don't know the words exactly, but in some somewhat more elegant way than I'm saying right now, to add in a support for the Historic Railroad to coexist in that part of it. Yeah.
I just haven't seen it spelled out previously, so I'd like to see that spelled out.
What, what council?
Sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and we have no designs on their rail yard. That's, that's not part of our plan.
Okay, okay. Yeah. Um, council, what do you, what do you think about that? Any other comments? Would you be supportive of that?
I support that.
Okay. Um, that being said, is this something we could have added and put on consent? Or should we put it on discussion for tomorrow? What do you, what do you think, Mr. Gore? Any thoughts on that?
I think it would be appropriate to add that to consent, as long as we can get that language added and have that revised.
Okay, so, uh, is everybody okay if we consent to that with the addition of language that is going to, um, you know, have, uh, support for coexistence of the Historic Railroad in our passenger line?
Is that something that Mr. Esti can turn around in 24 hours or less?
Okay. I, I'll, I'll ask, that's a good, I'll ask him, Mayor. Okay. Ms. Keats, is that, Keats is her last name, right? Correct? Yes, could, are you, is that sound something that would be, I don't know, I'm not going to say it's going to make you 100% happy, but is it, is it? So I hear, I hear what you're saying. I, what I, what I can't guarantee you in the resolution is that, that language. But what I can say is, as council directs the Railroad Commission, we direct them, they tell them what to do. So we can make sure that we are, um, asking them to make sure that you're involved in the conversations. But that's not going to be part of this resolution. Does that make sense? Okay.
I'd just like to add that, uh, Borough Manager is, is setting up, or has set up, I don't know the stage yet, of negotiating the, uh.
Okay.
He's, he's well aware of all the interested parties.
Okay.
Picture there's Beth in the middle, that's me on one end, that's Joanne on the other.
And the thoughts, Ms. Vicaro, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. I appreciate, more information is helpful and, and we need to hear all of it. And it matters that we all know what's going on. We are new, we are brand new. You know, we don't, we don't know what's going on, we don't have the history. We've been asked to read certain things and it only has partial history. And the, the Borough Manager is new, these things are always changing. So please keep coming to the meetings, keep showing up, keep telling us your opinions. Otherwise, we're not going to know.
Let me second that, please, as far as our week.
Thank you.
Ms., Ms. Keats, is your entity referred to as the Westchester Historic Railroad? Is that the proper name? Yeah, we just want to know who you're representing today, so we. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so council, we're in consent with that being, that language being added for tomorrow. So we'll add that to the consent agenda with that language. Um, there, so thank you so much for your information. Thank you so much for coming tonight and speaking, uh, Beth, and thank you. And, uh, okay, any other thoughts or comments from the public on that? Okay, all right, yeah, okay. Um, moving on to other business, uh, 15A is approving the June 14th and 15th, uh, 2022 Borough Council meeting minutes. Anybody have any issues with those? We'll add those to the consent. I do have another, uh, item for, uh, other business. Um, good, moving forward, it has been past practice to switch times for our Smart Growth and our Finance Committee meetings. Um, so that Smart Growth will now start at 6:00 and Finance will start at 6:30. Um, I propose, as, as long as nobody has an issue, to just make that permanent so we don't switch it like halfway through the year, every year, it's like it gets confusing. Is that, is that okay with everybody? So permanently moving forward, Smart Growth will start at 6 o'clock and Finance will start at 6:30 PM. Okay, cool.
Mr. Stefano, I have one other piece of information I'd like to add, and we made the announcement at the Smart Growth meeting, there is an opening on the Planning Commission.
Supposed to mention something else, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Don't worry, there's, there's an opening on the Planning Commission. So if there's any, uh, person who would like to volunteer and submit their resume for the Planning Commission, we'd be happy to review that and have them interviewed by Borough Council for that vacancy.
Okay, and in addition to that, there's also an opening on the Library Board Committee, correct? Yes, thank you, Dana, I missed that. So, uh, for, so same, pretty much the same message with that. Anybody who's interested in, please apply, uh, for that. Okay, any other business? Okay, thank you very much, uh, the meeting is adjourned.